Oh, man.
When I first started, she had me doing that and I think that like told me the group would do many good half day sessions is what they did and then said you come in and have something to see if this level of going to go down and so I don't know how they did it but they...
If you mean really want to learn much for this, we'll always take it. The paths we're just...
Well, I'll set it up just in my practice.
It's worth it. We can say no, but I guess everything's always...
What year? What is the third, fourth, how many years?
I think this is the third year.
Yeah, also some...
It's grown a little bit every... Because I remember to contact more people. Last year, same group was there and they were kind of doing pipelines and we had a group on one community that had a big state. They're, they're stopped.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. I could do...
I think we got them all signed.
You want your payment?
No, I thought that's mine.
Oh, let him have it.
All right, I already got plenty of friends.
Get yours. Stick it in another pocket.
I already got plenty of friends.
It'll take a while for it to get out.
Really?
I'm actually, or I don't know, had some idea that like he was gonna be others in his car, not his car. So that was, that was the thing.
Oh, she kept trying to...
They really loved that. We tried two years in a row to air that. They gave one year for fifteen minutes and then had a call or whatever. Last year was something with the flight, the flight condition was, I don't know why, which is happening.
Oh, you tried later?
Yeah, we did. Reach out.
It gets kind different as the weather gets over there.
He's like, ask him to talk to us. Claire, probably you can go. He just wanted...
Hey Marvin, did you hear about the second prison might be?
Didn't you say keys?
Yeah.
I feel like they talk about this about every two, three, four years.
They were talking, you know, one time they talked about closing Vance Air Force Base several times. I think they kind of got off of that, didn't they?
They got a little more defense spending though. Probably helped out.
You know, I've got to block that big gun.
Did he miss that one? I just thought he was on top of security and what.
No, I figured it was more than that. Hey.
You saved me? I love it. Forty-seven. Man, damn.
He didn't save me.
I think he saved you on that one.
So my mom, she's like, when I see her, she's like, put it down.
Yeah.
No, we don't.
Okay.
We'll have to get the, uh, the, uh, stagger. You want me to make the motion?
That'd be fine. I'll take it. Might be off to the fourth. No. Blanket purchase order. Six, one, one. I'm moving the kit, blanket purchase order. All day, right? Real car, you don't need it. Ah. He gets paid there and they were telling.
I'm, I'm just picking for him.
Yeah, me too. Somebody's getting one.
He's not like a good adult, Mark. What in spray water?
Marvin, you're the new one. Used to be always the one.
He's gonna get about what, thirty something a week? He's gonna get about thirty something a week. Yeah. Four years, nine months. So you need just one big stand to hold it for a while.
Everybody wearing their zone by area, I should be.
He has to split.
I don't make the motion, but I guess we still got a kind of game as well.
Okay. Marvin, what was that?
All day. All for money.
I took an engineering bill conclusion policy.
I made, or somebody gave me two copies. I'm gonna send back with Jay and Lynn for us to keep.
Yes, sir.
Second.
All day, right? Request to change Joe Compton as receiving officer in place of Commander Jones through Sheriff's Office.
All day, Rose. Second.
All day, right? Five-year break plan for year people one, two, and three.
He signed it for sure on all of them. Nothing was written on hard ones.
I'm just gonna take this, too.
I'm moving the kit to five-year break.
Second.
All day, right? I would pop the X-ray gene for year two to stop and burn case.
There's two copies there.
Girl.
Are you gonna stand there?
Girl.
Oh.
Do you want? Am I supposed to have it?
No, I have, I'm sorry. I have two copies there. Give me one back. She brought it in this morning. This probably laying on your desk and you probably forgot, but that's okay. Lena took care of it. You'll have to sign that for him.
Oh, she's gonna sign it.
I'm moving the kit, the...
Second.
All day, right?
My last, if I have any more trouble, there is there.
No, that stands. I'll make sure.
Year two taking high, doing one high dog. Crack hole. Wrong side crater.
Oh. I'll make the wish.
Second. All day, right? Resolution for the fifty-hundred center sales tax to be rejected beauty. This creepy. I'm gonna accept the resolution.
Oh, sorry.
All day, right? I don't know where Tom knew that. He was gonna be up here talking about, he called me a while ago about the break. Whether they get him or wait, wait around.
Wait, no.
I thought they... You gotta remember the way home.
Thank you for talking so much. Oh, my goodness. I can make a, can I get a copy? Want to take the talk? I'm sure she's got this on the online. She told you about it.
She know you bad.
Yeah.
Well, she emailed you bad.
Yeah, she emailed you bad. This is the resolution on changing the... Have you let the UMS know or not?
No. They know. They are making my mental.
Can I have a copy of the five that I have? I have one. It's not signed in District Two. Don't have the other two.
So you don't want District Two's or you don't want District?
Signed. I'll move the other file.
What do they call him, Sue?
Yeah, I hear things. Then they're thinking the same thing. Take me somewhere or... Got to hang.
Yeah, he's office. Says that he must be forwarded to his office.
Did he get a game?
About thirteen-thirty.
Hello.
You guys waiting on me?
You're a little late.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you for the time and apologies for being late. I had to be in the county anyway. I have a real great concern that I think would be a major impact on our county and that's Crabtree Correctional Center. As you guys know, the governor's looking at closing five correctional facilities around the state possibly. Possibly. I know it's possible right now, but the concern is that he's looking at older facilities. And as you know, Crabtree is a former boys home made into a correctional center. And because of that fact, I think it could be possibly on the list. I've talked to Warden Whitten down there and anyway, so my concern is we need to be contacting the governor and the Department of Corrections Director and the Department of Public Safety Director to inform him of the need and the impact that would have on our, our parts. But also, what we need to let them know is that first of all, Crabtree is one of the only facilities that runs in the black around the state.
Really?
Yeah. And so they, they make good use of the money. Also, what we need to let them be aware of is that, I haven't got the exact figures, but I can guarantee you the inmates are taken care of well, but yet at a lower cost than what they would at a lot of other facilities, specifically if we went to a part that paid prison. I mean, and that we had to pay for them. We also have a very exceptional, and I don't know how this is gonna get, I don't know how this come off, but the exceptional prison population up there at Crabtree Correctional. We have older, older gentlemen that are in there for not good things in the medium security part. And so where they would move them around, because they are an older population, they have to have more extensive healthcare needs and stuff like that. And so it also provides a unique opportunity for that. And so to move them out would also be a burden on the population. It'd also be a burden on the other prisons because they have all age groups, whereas Crabtree has more of a larger age group. And so those are my concerns, is that I don't want the prison closed. It has a major impact on the county. And I thought the county commissioner should know about that. And I know it'd be an impact on your money you get, because I do believe that every, every dollar spent in the canteen, they pay county sales tax. And so it would be, even if you took out all the, you know, hundreds of thousands... And so it would be, even if you took out all the, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of payroll that's paid out to people that live in our area, and like you said, if somebody comes in our area and they buy something, I mean, you pay somebody that lives here, that dollar turns around about seven times before it leaves our area. And so that makes a difference besides the fact that you also get direct inc. sales tax from the canteen and the facilities. And so I just, I think it's a great concern for our, we got a lot of our friends, neighbors, people we live with that are employed there or maybe impacted, their spouse works there or something like that. And so it's just a great concern to me, and I just want the people. My idea is to be proactive. There's no offense, our governor's a guy, and I looked it up, by statutory regulations, the Department of Corrections Director, all he has to do is say it's closed and it closes, okay? The legislature has no impact. We can't stop by killing the bill or anything like that. That statutory regulation falls on the Director of Corrections. So if the governor told the Department Director of Corrections, close Crabtree Correctional Center, it'd be closed tomorrow.
Basically, the governor's in charge.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the department, the director is, but he's under the, you know, the supervision of the governor, of course. So yeah, you're correct. And so the way things have happened, it could be overnight. And so I would rather be proactive than reactive, because after it's closed, it's probably gonna be too late. So in other words, my idea is for us to be a proactive county, a proactive area to reach out to that. I personally have a meeting with the Department, the Director of the Department of Corrections on Wednesday morning, but I didn't want to wait till after that. I just think, I think, I know there are, well, I was just at a town hall meeting last, I'm sorry, the nights are run together. I think it was last Thursday night that I was over at Fort Supply because they're worried about Keys Correctional Center. And I really believe that Keys is at a higher risk than what Crabtree is, but I still think Crabtree's at risk, okay? If I didn't think that, I wouldn't be up here. But I just think, I don't want to step back and say, you know, a couple months from now, boy, I wish we'd have done something about that again. And so my idea is now is to put it out there now versus later, because it could be, they can make the decision tomorrow, then we would be, it'd be over with.
So are you gonna meet with Scott Crowe?
I'm meeting with Scott Crowe on Wednesday, yes.
And?
Wednesday morning.
So he wasn't at that meeting, they said?
At what meeting?
Oh, they had some kind of meeting where they're talking about these two prisons.
They're, no, I, okay, there's no specific list that says these five correctional facilities are gonna be closed. No, they haven't given out a name.
They just.
The, there's, well, what they've said legitimately, publicly, is that they're looking at the older facilities, okay? Crabtree, Keys, both of them are older facilities, okay? Both of them, in fact, if you look at all three prisons I represent, Alba, you know, Bill Johnson, Crabtree, and Keys, the inmates are cared for much more economically than they are in many of the metro area prisons, okay? Now, they say, they're gonna come back and say, we've had problems with hiring people. That's not a problem now, right now. I mean, you guys look at our prison system, it's been a security blanket. You know, some of the people from the old field, you know, they went at the old field and came back to the prisons even, you know? But the prisons have been there and they've been just, they're gonna be, I mean, they're constant. I mean, and so, and we have 160 acres down here at Crabtree that we could use for expanding that prison. If they want, if they want to make it smaller prisons, I mean, bigger, they were talking about making four larger facilities and have it all housed in one area, you've got 160 acres, you can make a huge prison there. I think Keys has 3,000 acres.
I knew it would be. I didn't know it would be that.
Well, Crabtree has more or two. They've got more across the road.
Okay, well, the warden just told me they had 160 this morning. I think you're right. I think there's more than that, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, well, they got the farm just north of it.
Yeah. And so, you know, that's what we're looking at. And, you know, even in the community of Helena, you know, they get city sales tax off that because they've incorporated the Crabtree into their city. And so, you know, it's just, it just would impact a lot of people negatively. And so I just have a great concern for it, and that's why I wanted to bring it to you guys' attention and to the county's attention so that we could be proactive in that.
Get the place.
So. Questions? I'm happy, I mean, I may not have given you all the answers. I don't have all the answers. I'm still getting financial data. I'm planning. This is just me right now, planning. I'm planning on possibly doing a town hall in Helena, because I think we need to start there.
Well, I'm not, they're not gonna do something, I mean, do you have any idea, or is this just talk, or?
It's talk right now, but, I mean, no offense, the way they, the way he steps up, you don't hear what they're gonna do. He just does it, and then you find out later. I mean, like today, I saw on the news, I hadn't heard it, but the governor says he's planning on putting the Turnpike Authority and the Department of Transportation together. That's not been an item that's, but that's why he's wanting to get done, okay? I mean, so when he does it, he just does things. And that's why.
So I should get on the phone and express our.
Yeah, and that's why I didn't get the email. I can give it to you guys. I've gotta get copies of it though, but I've got an email that's coming in that'll have, I've got their phone numbers and addresses that you can write and call them. I think what we need to do right now is call them and just flood the phone banks. Let them know that, you know, closing Crabtree makes a difference to people in our area. And they're already doing that at Keys, and I think it's making an impact, so. But I just know that I think Keys is, yes, is at higher risk than Crabtree, but I don't want to step back and say, I don't think it's probably much of a risk, you know? And wish we had them. Because they do have four new housing units that they built down at Crabtree, you know, since they, not using just all the old facilities, but I think we're better safe than sorry. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions?
Will you leave the contacts with us?
Yes, I will. I'll get out as soon as I get off here if I can get with you, and I'll send you the email, forward the email to you and print it off. Would that be all right? I got it on a Word document. I had my assistant do that this morning. So. Give me the real ID? Supposedly in April is what I heard last. I can give you more information when I get down there next month, when I'm not walking around the halls all day, but what I'm hearing is that by the end of April.
Next week also, and Wednesday is the day that we go to the Capitol.
Breakfast.
So we have breakfast at Echo, and then we go to the Capitol next week for Cota, so we need representatives to go down there.
I'll be there.
Cool.
Is that this week?
About eight o'clock. When I see the, right? When I see if they're worth it. I'll be there. About eight o'clock. But I don't, I mean, I appreciate your time. I, huh?
We'll buy your breakfast.
Yeah, you will. But I'm not eating any breakfasts. It's not a big deal. They put out scrambled eggs, sausage, and something else there. And biscuits. And so, and I'm probably not gonna eat anyway, but anyway. But I do thank you guys for your time, and I.
Thank you for coming up.
Appreciate you being a part of the community.
We do.
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
Have fun next month. Well, actually, until June, right? We tried to make an eye point and said, oh, yeah, June 15th, you can have an eye point. And they said, okay, we're gonna use somebody else.
So, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll get that to you right now.